Okay, well, we already did call to order at six forty seven. The attendance was myself, Diane Bucho, Deidre Parrotti, Gary Cheeseman, and Ben Timman. That's four out of five. Pete should be coming. We do have public input. It's a regular meeting. Ten minutes reserved for any public input. Any participated participants wishing to address the select board during public comments may do so. Today by Zoom by just raising their hands. Speakers should identify themselves by name and street. And the select board may or may not deliberate or vote on any matters brought up during public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to participate in public comment? I don't see anybody, and I think I see everybody on the screen, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I see no hands.
I see no hands. All right, let's get right into our new business then. We need to discuss and possibly vote on the acquisition of five. AEDs automated external defibrillators. Additionally, we need to formally request approval from the FinCom to release the funds from the reserve fund for the purchase of such AEDs. I think we're all in agreement that, especially after the training from the fire department, that we should have more AEDs available in and around town hall. I don't remember the exact locations for these five. Steve, do you?
Yeah, we wanted one at the COA building, one in the COA van. One at the DPW. One at the police station and. One at the.
Iron Rail isn't?
Iron Rail. That's right. Thanks, Gary.
And the Iron Rail is different than the DPW?
Yeah, well, the Iron Rail building and then the DPW building itself.
Right. And we thought the sooner we got this money transferred through the FinCom, then we could order them because there's a waitlist. So does anyone want to make a motion and we can further discuss?
No, I think that. Well, I'm sorry.
Deidre, go ahead.
Move to approve the acquisition of five automated external defibrillators, AEDs, and request the finance and advisory committee to release funds from the FinCom Reserve Fund for the purchase of the five AEDs.
Gary seconds.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Steve, did you have anything to add to that?
I think that's great. I just. You know, they're about just so they're about twenty-five hundred dollars apiece and the lead time from when you order them, which, you know, kind of adds to the urgency is three to six months. So we definitely want to get this. Order and sooner rather than later. And they do require some sort of a, you know, fifty percent or something down payment to take the order and order the devices.
So how does it work? If we approve this, when does it go to FinCom?
FinCom will pick it up. So we'll send either myself or Jeff Calder, yeah, Jeff Sula, and we'll send. A little memo to the FinCom tomorrow, just saying, you know, giving them the details, a little bit of why we need it, the reserve fund balance, et cetera.
Okay.
And then they'll. Approve or deny the release of the funds. So once they release the funds, then we can proceed. If they don't release the funds, we'll be back to the select board. Let you know.
Okay, sounds great. Let's vote. Diane says yes.
Deidre, yes.
Gary.
Yes.
And Gary votes yes.
Yes.
Perfect. So it's. Four votes. What do we? So it's unanimous for those who are here. Is that correct? Yes. Some old business. We have a discussion and potential vote on a one-day liquor license for creative catering for an event at the Penguin Hall on Thursday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-four, from five thirty to eight. We held this over from last meeting because not all the paperwork was in. I think all the paperwork is in now. So I think we should have a motion and then we can discuss.
Move to. Discussion purposes anyway, to approve the one-day liquor license for creative catering for event at Penguin Hall on Thursday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-four, from five thirty to eight P M.
Second, Gary seconds.
So it's moved and seconded. We can discuss. I I believe we had asked for updates. On the Penguin Hall financial situation. So before we approve, I suppose if there's any update at all, Steve.
Yeah. A couple of updates. So one, they had a. In as part of their water repayment plan, they had a. A. A payment due on the first. That was Friday. Town Hall was closed. So we gave them to the end of today and we still have not received that payment. And additionally, it was brought to my attention today from the police chief that they are also in arrears. On some detail pay that they had gotten a detail for a project and have not received. Our refund for that. So that we we pay the. The way it works is we pay the, the town pays the officers and then the vendor reimburses the town. So we haven't, we haven't received that reimbursement yet.
So that's the regular most when when outside entities use our police detail, that's a normal procedure that we pay. For the officers and then we submit to reimburse from, say, the Topsail Fair or in this case Penguin Hall, right?
Yeah, because we're by contract, we're required to pay the officers within fourteen days of them. Fourteen days of them providing the service. So.
Are we outside the fourteen days?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, we've already paid the officer. We have to pay the officer in any event.
Right. But I mean, their bill is now outstanding.
Yes. Yes, that's, yeah, that's correct. So to get to this point where they're actually going back and reconciling, they can admit to it too, that they're trying to get better about reconciling their past due detail invoices, that it's been outstanding for some time.
And this, this is an event. I'm sorry, Deidre, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, you said they were also notified that they had until the end of today for the water payment?
No, well, we gave them through. It was due on Friday.
Okay.
I mean, so.
Which they know.
Which they know. And but we figured to give the, you know, we were closed. So we do, we take the payments in the Dropbox, but the, so we figured we'd give through the end of today to see if she came with the check, but it did not. And one day grace period.
Got it.
Ben.
Um. So the applicant is actually creative catering. And so this is an event for. I guess the the only connection to. The property owner here is the use of their venue.
Well, my understanding is that this is, this is a, this is an event being put on by Penguin Hall for a fundraising event, and this is the catering company that is running the event for them. So it is, it is the permit is the creative catering because they will be the one serving the alcohol. And serving the food as well, for that matter. But from my understanding, it's an event for Penguin Hall fundraising event.
Gary.
So if it's a fundraiser for Penguin Hall, I should think. Although we've had concerns in the past about payments, that. I would think that we'd like to allow them to make money so they can pay us. Is that rational?
No.
I see. Deidre doesn't agree with that statement. I'm a little bit torn.
Um, I think because there's a pattern that we're seeing here and that we, you know, we had to go to a payment plan to get paid for the water. And now even after being granted a payment plan, it's still not being met. So, you know, the last time the license was submitted late, it's sort of like a continuous pattern here. And I I find that problematic and particularly that there's not also some explanation.
Right. That's a good point.
I think we.
Sorry.
I think a few months ago, under similar circumstances, not to say that has to dictate what the board does now, but that we. Well, I guess we didn't go out of our, we didn't convene a special meeting, I think it was, to approve. A prior event there. And then. The most recent time that this whole matter came to our attention was with respect to the. Food license, which, you know, was renewed. But based on. You know, a payment plan. So I guess I think the property owner certainly been on ample notice that. You know, that it has, that it should be. Getting squared away with these matters before it's asking for. Discretionary approvals.
And, you know, the the event is on the twenty first. So the select board is scheduled to meet on the nineteenth, right next regularly scheduled meeting. So. You know. If they were to pay up, I don't know if it would change. You know, it's still before the event. So, you know, she may have an opportunity to come. Discuss it with the board. I don't know. I just wanted to throw that out there. That's. There's still, the board is still coming together one more time before the event.
So it also says in the application, Gary, just to that point about fundraising, it says promotional event with North Shore Magazine. So I'm not sure that's the same as fundraising.
Any further conversation or discussion? Do we think we're ready to vote? Okay.
What? Can I ask one quick question?
You can.
Is there? A option here to. Request immediate payment on the other stuff or to find out why we did not receive money today? To reconsider because, you know, I'm thinking in one sense, you know, they certainly are in financial difficulties. I don't see how it benefits the town to put them deeper into difficulties without some conversation.
So my thought is they knew we were meeting on this and they couldn't be here.
All right.
We didn't make a formal invite, but. I think because we didn't vote on it last week or last meeting, whenever that was, and we said we would bring it back, they would have been more interested perhaps to come and. Speak to us or explain the situation or tell us what the event's about.
Very well.
You know.
Yep.
But we could look at it again, right? At the next meeting if everything's paid? Is that what we're agreeing?
It cert- we certainly could. I mean, that to run an event or to plan an event, I think you need. To notify and prepare and plan. And so. If it was denied. Or even postponed, how could they go forward? You know, planning for the event if we're not going to meet again till the nineteenth, that gives them two days.
True.
So I don't know. I don't know. I'm happy to give that a try. But right now we have on the table a motion to approve this license. From March twenty first.
There's, has there been a second?
Yes, it's been seconded.
All right.
So we really just need to vote.
I mean, if it's the, if it's the pleasure of the board. I could amend the motion. Well, I mean, I, as I said, I made the motion to approve just for discussion purposes only. So as it stands now, that would likely be voted down, but one possibility, I suppose. Would be that. You know, that motion gets withdrawn and then a motion to deny the application, but perhaps without prejudice to the property owner coming current on. On its. Those payment obligations to the town that are now that are overdue.
So how, so if if that was a motion that you made. Would we need to? And so it gets made, everything gets brought up to date, you know, on March fifteenth, I'm throwing out a date. Do we need to meet again to? To make a final approval?
I think we, I think we would want to. I mean, I think we would still want to. Meet on a regular scheduled, scheduled meeting, which is, you've said Diane is, you know, there's only a couple of days before the event, but if we, if we were to vote in the way that I described it, it perhaps sends a signal that. You know, that those are the things that need to be corrected to. Make it more likely that we would approve it. On the, on whatever date that is.
Very creative motion.
I don't know if it's the way to go or not, but I mean, I think it. At least. Gives them a little bit of a roadmap. It shouldn't be a very difficult roadmap for anybody to to follow, but just it looks like there's two payments that are due. Fire Department reimbursement and. The water installment payment.
Police, police reimbursement, right? I, Gary.
Right. So essentially you're going to go for an approval contingent upon payment of the two bills? Is that how the motion is going to read then?
Well, we could, we could do that. And if we, if we did do that, I'd be fine with that. If we did that, then I, then there wouldn't be, I guess, a need for another vote, or we. Could say denied, but, you know, denied without prejudice to. Reconsideration upon payment of those bills, which is, I realize it's a little convoluted, but. That would still send a signal to them that that's what needs to be fixed, or we could approve it with those conditions, I guess. Or we could do something else.
Very creative.
I'd recommend that, I'd recommend the denial. Without prejudice. And then it gives you, it's, I think, I believe it'll be cleaner and then you can bring it back up on the nineteenth, if we do get the payment. And I can just communicate to Molly Martin tomorrow morning.
Sounds good.
So. I'm not sure how this works with Robert's Rules of Order. If if the motion can just be withdrawn by the person who made the motion, or if there's not some other action that needs to be taken. Procedurally.
I I think it can just be withdrawn because we did not vote on it.
Okay. So I'll, as the movement on that motion, I'll withdraw it and I'll move instead that. The requested. Well, let me just look at the actual language. One second.
One-day liquor license.
All right, so I move. That we. Deny the one-day liquor license for creative catering for event at Penguin Hall on Thursday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-four, from five thirty to eight P M. Without prejudice to reconsideration of the decision upon payment of all outstanding. Obligations to the town.
Gary seconds.
Quick. Yeah. Have any other conversation, discussion? I would like to start voting and say yes. Yes.
Gary, yes.
Deidre, yes.
Ben, yes.
So all four. Denial without prejudice. To the. One-day liquor license. Great. What a great way to. To go forward with that. I really appreciate that. Thanks, Ben. And Steve, you'll reach out?
Yes, I will.
And payment should probably be due, if we have to post that meeting agenda. By the seventeenth. That payment should be in. It shouldn't be a late add to the agenda, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, I could tell her that we need it by. You know, the morning of the fourteenth, because that's when we need to post it by the end of the day on the fourteenth, for the, we're going through the weekend with the forty-eight hours.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's important.
Okay, you have to amend the agenda again.
Thank you. A discussion and potential vote on a one-day liquor license. Everybody's having parties. Liquor license for First Church for a private event on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from six to ten. We saw this one last, this was pulled last time because it was not complete as well, Steve. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry. This one is now complete. There is no issues. This is a request from the First Church.
Okay. An interesting motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the First Church for the private event on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from six to ten P M.
Gary seconds.
Deidre so moved, I think, right?
So moved, yeah.
So moved. Gary seconded.
Jumped in too fast.
Questions, comments, discussion? Now, let's vote. I say yes. Diane says yes.
Deidre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Another unanimous decision. To approve that. It's great the way you guys are all doing that on the way, same way that I see you on the screen. All right, here we go. The warrant. Everyone get the weekend, the warrant over the weekend? So I did, and I sent Steve a whole bunch of. Little things that I found. Someone else probably noticed this, but on the front page, we have the wrong date. Did you know that? Did you catch that, Steve?
See that?
Yeah, so I'll see. At the top. Hold on, let me share it.
I didn't notice it when I first went through it. Steve, are you by yourself today? I don't see any Michelle or Joe.
Yeah, they're in the, in the background trying to.
Do other things.
Yeah.
We should be looking at the version that that you sent out on Friday, right, Steve?
Yeah, I, I'm just, just trying to pull it up here.
There we go.
Oh, yeah. Jesus Christ. Excuse my language.
Six.
Six, yeah.
Twenty twenty-four.
Hey, how many times people have read through that and took to this stuff on the front page?
Okay, so we're, we're in person.
Yeah, so we're in person. I changed this. There's a couple of material changes that I received from. Comments of members on the board. So I tried to highlight the typos. I did not highlight, but I highlighted the material changes when we're going through, just so you know that it's changed from the version that you reviewed over the weekend. And here is one of them. This was still set up as a Zoom meeting from last year. However, it will be in person this year. Similar to the other select board meetings, it will be an in-person meeting with a. A hybrid. Yeah, capability for more of a convenience to the public. However, if there's a techno, technical difficulty, the meeting will continue in person.
I think that's a great idea. We're doing a good job with that.
Yes, this remains unchanged.
And so what's going on that blank page? The Finance and Advisory Committee report?
Yeah, so Finance and Advisory Committee report is going to go here.
Okay.
So they're just waiting. They've done that. They're finished with that. And they're just waiting on our final warrant articles. So they're, they reference what article numbers in their report.
Okay.
And. Just to, you know, in case we change the order, or if the order gets changed, then. Similar to this document here, we have a couple of references of article numbers. Yeah, Gary?
I see.
Yeah, you got another.
Yep.
Top of that page, April sixth again.
Oh, Jesus.
And if I could, on Article Two. Is that increased veteran and or senior?
Increased veteran.
Because in the verbiage, it says just senior tax work off.
It's both.
Okay.
So then in the, to see that if the town will vote to increase from fifteen to two thousand, the maximum tax deduction available to seniors under the senior tax work off, you have to add veteran in there too. In the motion or in the, what do they call it? The article. Right where your cursor is.
Oh.
Yep.
And I think you need one more veteran, right? Available to seniors and veterans. Under the senior and veteran tax work off. Earlier in that same line.
Good to see if the town vote to increase the maximum tax available to seniors and veterans. This is unchanged from last time. It's just a note to update the article references. And then the budget summary, and if you remember that the budget summary that we sent out last week, it's inserted between article. Well, if it's Article Three and Four, will be like the. The vote goes by department, both salary and expense line items. And the total ties with with this number here.
Hopefully. Sorry.
In theory, right? Free cash. We have a, this is. This was like this, go ahead, Gary.
So sorry with the knit noise, but I saw an Article Three, the commentary. Yeah, one, two, three, fifth line down. Using available funds, you need a dollar sign before twenty-five nine hundred.
On an Article Three.
Uh, I'm sorry, one, I'm further down, sorry, at the bottom of the. Article four. There you go.
Yes, the, the change here from the last time we talked about it was where. We've, instead of creating a separate article, we're able to reappropriate the funds, the twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars for a grant match and the. Firefighters reconfiguration of the office space. Of in last year's capital program that those, neither one of those projects are going to go forward. So we're going to reappropriate those funds to offset. The free cash contribution needed to fund this year's capital requests.
So how was that? How was that in there? If you could scroll up, how is that in the?
Yeah, so it could shows up, it shows up in the motion.
Yeah. Oh.
So the commentary spells it out, but then the motion will be.
Okay.
It'll spell out the rate available funds and it will, will reference specifically what projects we're raising it from, and then also free cash.
Got it.
Steve, this is Jeff.
Yeah.
Did you want me to change that table so it has multiple columns so you can see eight twenty is the, like, the total cost and then have a column for free cash? And a column for prior year articles or is the, the description below?
Yeah, I think, I think we're good. I think leaving it like this to not confuse it because we're not going to fund any one article with different funding source. It's just. It's the, the, the total plan will be funded through two, two different funding sources.
Perfect.
This is the funding of the stabilization funds is similar. Well, this is what we talked about last time. Recap on that is, you know, we're estimating around two point three, maybe two point four million dollars in free cash. And based on. Us looking to leave about one percent of our total expenditures net of appropriation. We were going to. The Finance Committee recommends and the, the Select Board also recommended and supported the. Funding of capital program and about nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars into the stabilization fund to get us to about a little over six percent and OPEB trust fund contribution of three hundred thousand. And one, so we're going to be taking this graph just to highlight. I didn't move it across because we have some updating to do with the article numbers. So when I copy and paste it across, we're going to put this graph. At the bottom of the commentary in the OPEB trust fund. Article, which is Article Six as before you and at the bottom of the capital. Because it, you know, just a detail so that the folks reading it can kind of see what's going on, how they're all tied together. Because it, you know, just a detail so that the folks reading it can kind of see what's going on, how they're all tied together.
So that chart will be in there three times?
Three times, yeah.
Okay.
You also add chart to free cash, OPEB and capital article over here.
That's great. Oh, um, I see Jeff has a, Jeff Calder has a question.
Hi, Jeff.
Yeah, I just wanted, thank you. Uh, just wanted to ask then, uh, Steve, if the use of free cash in that little chart there, uh, under Article five should be updated, so it doesn't read eight twenty, uh, four forty anymore if the capital programs funding is coming from a combination of free cash plus the, the recoup or the unspent funds from the prior year.
Yeah, that's correct. That's, it's in the note here. The, the amount, article and amounts, so we'll update that on the final.
Ah, okay.
Have that updated. I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Everybody's helping out. Article six.
So six is the OPEB, uh, the OPEB trust fund contribution that we just spoke about. Prior year bills. This is our, these are our two outstanding bills that we have. And, um, based on that, the fact that these were planned for and funds were appropriated in the fiscal year, we only need a simple majority, not four fifths. They weren't unplanned expenditures. It's just that we did not receive the bill in time to pay it before our books had to close.
That's perfect. So it's the same boat, so we can squeeze it into the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the Cemetery Trust Fund, and we went, went through, I don't wanna, unless you have any edits, I know we went through these pretty, and pretty detailed, uh, review with the FinCom last week. Just kind of scroll through quick unless you have any change.
Well, before you get to twelve, I think we can agree with these numbers and then you can put back the consent agenda being set. I think before we go further, you can make sure that the consent agenda, because we're not gonna change those article numbers.
Okay, so you like those article numbers? Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll do, so then that means it will be eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Seven.
No, we don't do prior year bills, do we? Or do you want to? Usually we don't, I don't think.
Usually we don't because we do forfeits.
Okay.
The, the amount is three dollars, three hundred seventy-nine dollars, and it's a simple majority. I'd say put it right in with the.
All right, yeah, I'm not opposed.
Someone's opposed, they can pull it out.
Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Okay, seven, two.
Unless anybody on the board has another option. You're good? Seven to eleven.
Funding stabilization.
Yes, you can put the article numbers in there, too, but if Jeff's gonna make changes, he can do. Jeff S. is gonna make changes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll change that.
So then we get into Article twelve, water software. We went through CPA CPC. We went through Article fourteen, I had questions.
Article.
Gary.
Yeah, for thirteen, aren't we gonna put the numbers in the chart like last year?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'll probably pull that up for you right now. All right. So can you see this? Can you see the spreadsheet in front of you?
Yes.
All right, so this will be the, this will be copied and pasted into there. These are Lauren's, basically Lauren's edits to what you saw last time. They've been Rick, Rick Woodland, um, worked with her over the weekend.
I see an error right there in number ten though.
Okay.
In the red, including related fees and A eleven expenses or all expenses.
I think A eleven.
I haven't read through the other ones.
If that last comment, uh, column with the red estimated reserves added in there, um, I still want that to say FY twenty-five budgetary reserve. Cause I need distinct votes between utilizing FY twenty-four budgetary reserve before six thirty twenty twenty-four, and then, um, the remaining projects would be taken out of the FY twenty-five budgetary reserve that we're setting as part of the vote for, um, the estimated revenues.
Okay, um, all right, so why don't we, we'll get Lauren's ear in the morning, you and I, first thing. And we'll, we'll make sure that we can make the appropriate, or at least, uh, amended to satisfy her in the accounting side of things.
Right, because it's not revenue. Why would you say estimated revenues?
Estimated revenues is a source for, um, what we call the appropriations and reserves. So every year, we, we, we carve out what we think are CPA collected from the residents in the state match. We look at what those numbers are, and that's where we come up with the ten percent that goes to affordable housing, the ten percent that goes to, you know, historic preservation, et cetera. Um, so I know there was some talk going around about, you know, needing a, another column for that, um, but just from my side, I need to have a distinct FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five budgetary reserve.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll let you guys figure that out. Is everybody good with this? Do we want to read through it? I think we're good. There's no, no one seems to have any comments. Or are you reading? No one's answering me. I feel like I'm talking to a bunch of young children.
I'm finished reading. Looks good so far.
Yeah, I'm all set with it.
Okay. Deirdre?
Yep.
Yes. Thanks, Steve. So Article fourteen, I had a question with the name of the article.
Personal.
Right, so just take note of, I don't know, instead of, so fourteen, you had a but I'm sorry, Diane, go ahead.
Yes, Article fourteen, the title.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's just add section or new by, it's a new bylaw. It's not a section. Right? Adding a new article. Add Article ten to section five point five dash thirty-seven. Organization in succession of board commission, council, and committee officer. I don't think, yeah. Anyone have any better wording?
Or add in. Add in. Yeah.
Or just new bylaw?
Is Article five a new section? Or is it, we adding to the existing Article five?
Article five is a new article, if I remember correctly.
Added article?
Add Article five, section five dash thirty-seven.
We're talking about the title, right?
Yep, yep.
So add you just wanted to add article?
I think so. Add, it sounds like we already did it, so I don't think we want to do that, or new bylaw. I can't think of how we've done this before.
But if all of Article five is new, then why would this be section five dash three seven? It's not just, it's the section's new?
No, it's, if I can explain, the, the articles and sections run separately. So
Okay.
Article one has sections one through eight, Article two has nine through thirteen, whatever.
I got you. Okay. Oh, I see. So it is a whole new article, yeah. Um, I mean, it could just say, um, could just say new, new bylaw hyphen organization of, and succession of board commission, council, and committee officers. I don't think we need to get into, is it a section? Is it an article in the title? You can say new bylaw.
A new bylaw.
And then get rid of, add article to town or one or by.
Yeah, and just do a hyphen and then just do hyphen and then, and then start up, yeah, organization. And that seems like it would work. It's an extra space there, but.
Yeah, nice job.
It's just a a spacing issue on both sides of the hyphen, but that's it.
I think bylaws capitalized, but because you capitalized it in the article. Thank you.
Sure, I think that works.
Yep.
And Steve, um, well, maybe Lauren's already checked this, but, um, given, this is a, an amendment or the addition of a, to the general bylaws, which I, I do think is a simple majority, but I'm not positive. I assume that maybe Lauren has
Which ones? That the new?
Check the thresholds of approval.
Yeah, she, she has reviewed all of them, but I've learned from past, um, instances that I'll, before this goes out tomorrow, this will go back to her and I'm gonna ask to double check the
Well, Roger would know. It's in town meeting time. Pretty much a hundred percent sure that it's a simple majority for a bylaw.
Zoning, for zoning bylaws, it gets a little bit more complicated based on the the, actually, the MBTA community's legislation, um, changed some of that, but we'll, we'll get to that when we get to the zoning.
Junk.
Bylaw, yeah.
Yeah. I think fifteen and sixteen, the Board of Assessors and Board of Health is all good, right?
Yeah, while we're here, do you guys want to make a recommendation?
We haven't done that yet? Is this the first one? We haven't done that yet? Oh, we didn't do fourteen either, did we? Oh, no, we did fourteen.
No, I, I put it in there. I put it in there. Well, you haven't taken the vote yet to recommend.
Is this the only, is this the first one we haven't recommended yet? Did we miss any yet?
Uh, no, I don't believe.
Okay. So I'd certainly entertain a motion that the Select Board recommend Article fourteen to add, uh, a new bylaw about the organization in succession of board commission, council, and committee officers.
No moved.
Gary seconds.
Perfect. Any more discussion? We talked at it, at meetings and stuff. I say yes?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Four zero, perfect. Unanimous. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, Steve. So then Board of Health. I think we've talked about this and, and Steve explained it, too. I'd certainly entertain a motion that the Select Board recommend moving from an elected Board of Health to an appointed Board of Health or Article fifteen.
Moved.
Gary seconds.
Any discussion? Diane says yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Four nothing, another unanimous vote. I would also entertain a motion um, that the Select Board recommend moving from an elected Board of Assessors to an appointed Board of Assessors or Article sixteen.
Moved.
Gary seconds.
Any more discussion? Steve, you jumping the gun.
Sorry.
Look at you. Um,
So quick.
I, I know. Diane reluctantly says yes to that one.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Perfect.
And Steve, you're putting in four zero one?
Yeah, that's what.
Should be four zero zero, right? Third one is a, a abstention rather than absent.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Article seventeen, septic loan program. We have also spoken about this as well. I would entertain a motion that the Select Board recommend the community septic loan program or Article seventeen.
Moved.
Gary seconds.
And we can vote, I believe. No discussion? Diane says yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Perfect, four, four nothing on that one. Article eighteen. I'm gonna throw it to Ben to see if he has any changes or.
Sure, um, thank you. We, the Planning Board met last week and I attended that meeting and, uh, it was very useful in getting some feedback from Planning Board members, and the upshot of that was that we did make a few wordsmithing changes, and then the one substantive change, I believe it's really the only substantive change from the earlier draft is, um, Dan Pastorello suggested that there be a, a fifth exemption covering yard waste, brush, and compost, which I think makes a lot of sense. And so that's now exemption number four of five. We put it, uh, in there, um, in that particular sequence, but the rest of this is substantively the same as, um, the, the last version.
So again, then, then at the title, I would just like to recommend that we say amend the junk zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I think, or just, um, maybe or, yes, right, yeah, amendment.
Junkyard zoning bylaw?
I don't want to call it a junkyard because people are getting confused with, um, with the definition of junkyard, which is sort of different than this, but they're related, so, um, how about, I think it should say, um, amend, what did we do in the upper one? We said new bylaw hyphen?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe we could say, um, amend zoning bylaw, capital Z, men zoning bylaw hyphen, um, storage of junk, outdoor storage. We actually might as well, it's gonna be called outdoor storage or stockpiling of junk. That's gonna be the name of the section if it passes, so. Outdoor storage or stockpiling of junk.
Perfect.
Yeah.
At some point, this happens everywhere, though. We have bylaw written so many different ways.
Right. Hyphens, no hyphens, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Yeah, as long as we're consistent, which maybe we're not, I can see in the
Yeah.
text of this itself that we're not, so I guess that can be a, a final find. find, search and find edit type thing.
But I think all of our bylaws are like that, though. Unfortunately, we need to clean that up. It doesn't look like Gary did that, but it's a nice picture.
Hey, nice uh, nice new diagram.
Gary got it started and then who was this Michelle, did you say?
Yeah, Michelle did.
Nice job, Michelle. So vote needed, um, I'm obviously Lauren should confirm it, but I'm pretty confident that that this is going to require two thirds approval threshold.
I would agree as well.
Okay. Because that's always been the rule for zoning amendments. Um, there though, under the the state statute, that the same statute that um that um enacted MBTA communities makes certain types of zoning bylaws now just a majority vote, like ha- having to do with certain open space and affordable housing changes, but this this would not be one that would be in the simple majority category.
No, it's definitely a two thirds. I would I would defer to you, Ben, on on a motion.
Um, I'll move that the Select Board recommend passage of what is called right now article eighteen, um amending the zoning bylaw to add an outdoor storage or stockpiling of junk provision.
Gary seconds.
Any more discussion on that? Diane votes yes?
Yeah.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Did the uh planning board take a vote there?
They did, yeah, they voted unanimously five to zero for it.
Wonderful. Great. Looks like we're on article nineteen, adoption of credible service regulation.
This is just an update on this before discussion.
Thank you.
So Hamilton looks like they're going to put it on their warrant. You know, they don't really don't know much of any more than us. I think their rationale was that you know, if there is a financial impact, it may be relatively small. They don't have a lot of, I don't believe they have a lot of call firefighters anymore. They've kind of gone more towards a full time model, both with police and fire. You know, so that that may be true, however, you know, it's just important to note that.
Steve?
Yeah.
Excuse me, um, is Peter there to let in now? It's asking to be let in.
There we go. There it is.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks. Steve, you were saying, however, in in one of them, it's not the same situation?
Well, I mean, we have more call firefighters, you know, I just think that, you know, on one hand, if they qualify for the service, I feel like, you know, you should be able to buy the service back regardless of who the liability falls on. Uh, if you did provide the service, but there is a lot of unknowns here in that. You know, this this section here where it says the board, that would that's not the select board, it's the retirement board. And this crediting of service is a totally new calculation, even by the admission of the uh uh Chuck Costro of the Essex Retirement. He, you know, he's like he's unsure how the board is going to interpret that. It's their regulation, they passed it, but they haven't had to actually calculate one out, so we don't know, you know, is it going to be? You know, a windfall, is it going to be similar to what it was before? You know, we we don't know. So there's just some some unknown. So if the question was to come up, you know, how much is this going to cost or, you know, what are the estimates? You know, it's really, we just don't know. Any anything would be a guess. We have no idea what the supporting documents are going to be. It's just totally new. So that's, you know, that's really my only hesitation on discussion with the board. I just can't answer any questions as to, you know, how it's going to play out.
And so if I read further on what you said, two paragraphs down, the responsibility for any of this will be assessed to the municipality.
That's correct, so any.
So it's 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 all on the town to pay that out.
Right, so it's not the risk is not if you, you know, the risk is not redistributed through the all the participants in Essex County like a, you know, a new a new employee would be like the new employee would be, you know, it would could change your percentage uh in the in the risk pool, but not, you know, not necessarily. It's not all the liability gets put on the community, it's it's distributed. And in this case, the all the liability that, you know, that calculated a separate assessment that uh do it encompass the entire cost of uh the pension, you know, boasts both in the liability sense, so what the future cost could be and in uh retire. So I put it here, you know, it's not uncommon to have a recommendation made at town meeting floor. I kind of set it up that way. The board wanted to include it in the warrant, we could include it so they can bring it before the taxpayers since the request was made and, you know, we could continue to talk with Hamilton. Topsfield is in the very early stages. They were also approached by uh one of their firefighters and they have just started discussions on it, but they don't know if it's going to gain any traction or not for their warrant. Their meeting's a little bit later than ours, but just kind of, you know, Joe and Kevin is the town manager in Topsfield and myself can kind of stay connected over the next month and you know, if anything comes up, we can obviously notify the board if any more information comes to light.
So that that's an option, then we can wait and make a recommendation if then, even if then, I guess not at the next meeting, we would be at town meeting. I personally think that um it concerns me a little bit just listening to you explain it and reading the commentary because it's just so um vague. We have no idea of the cost of what it could be. So that's, I just feel as if um if we had more time, if if our FinCom had more time to to look and and make up some estimates and so you had some idea, that would be my, those are my concerns with that. Anybody have anything else? Because I think we need to decide if we're going to put it on the warrant or keep it keep it on the warrant or take it off the warrant. And then we have to decide on our recommendation by town meeting. Gary.
So Steve, this really is going to apply to a very small group, right? Only those that do the five year buy and then continue for a period of time as call firefighters and then continue as a full timer with the same municipality. Is that correct?
That's correct. So as far as I know, we're looking at right now, you know, from the digging we've done and a little bit of digging we've done, you're looking at I believe, three firefighters and this also applies to police as well. Um, three five, but three firefighters and um two or three police officers.
Do you think we'll have more guidance on this from Chuck Costro or others?
Yeah, I mean, I think the guidance is going to come out by way of them actually calculating a few of them out and then figuring out how they're going to actually you know, come up with an allocation or a separate assessment, you know, like how much, how are they going to quantify the future costs of the liability? How are they going to quantify it in retirement? Um, you know, and then what what are the supporting documents they're going to be required of the participant by the time? So like, how are they going to prove how many calls they went to in any given month, you know, particularly when you're talking records? That can be twenty, thirty or more years old in some instances. Uh, so really, you know, we don't, we just, we don't really know any of that, so it could be that they're very lenient uh and it results in a decent amount of time bought and then how are they, you know, how are they going to calculate that as far as the liability on the town's uh perspective? So I think really the it's just going to be time as communities adopt this and folks buy the time back and we kind of see, you know, what the board, how the board interprets this, the board being the retirement board. Uh, and then how they're going, you know, then the cost implications in that, and you can start coming up with performers. It's like, well, here's an individual who you know, bought four or five years, here's his salary. You know, so roughly, this is how this is how the board's looking at it and so the board's putting quantifying the liability that's going to be assessed to the community. And then you can come up with you know, more firm numbers based on, you know, who you have that could be affected by this, but like how many, how many employees you have, average salaries, uh age, how much time they have left uh to be paying into the system, things like that.
The town, if the town weren't to take action on this now for the spring town meeting, it wouldn't prevent the town from doing so for the fall town meeting. We have benefit of, maybe have the benefit of some of that guidance, is that true or?
Yeah, I mean, to the extent that somebody tries to buy time between now and then, right, that's the that's the key piece. Somebody has to try the new regulation, so by somebody meaning, you know, another community has to adopt it, so that means we would need Hamilton and Tops, let's just say hypothetically, Hamilton and Topsfield both adopted it in the spring. And then between the spring and next fall, would have to have individuals in those two communities, employees uh purchase years of service through Essex County retirement. So it's not just that they're um you know, they can purchase service, they have to actually purchase the service. And then from there we can see, you know, because that will actually be, that will actually force the retirement board to calculate essentially how much they can buy back. I guess it's a long way of saying maybe depending on what happens.
It's just, it's so, it's so. I don't know. It doesn't seem definite either way, so. I don't know.
You know, you know, you get knowns at the core of it, it's like, you know, they earn the time, then should be able to buy buy the time back. And they were able to buy it back up until two thousand twenty-three, when the interpretation of the law changed to be more in line with the rest of the state. And then they came up with this regulation as a way to allow the continuance of buying more than five years, but the liability will be and this is how we're going to calculate it because that was another issue they had. So this is how we're going to calculate it and the liability that's associated with it will be passed directly to the community.
All right, wants to talk about it. I guess our first decision is is whether we want to keep it in the warrant. Is that right, Steve?
Yeah, I think if if right, yeah, I think that's that's a good point is if if you don't want it in the warrant, then there's no sense. You know, we can talk about it at a different date or you can talk about it now, but it's like, you know, we can table it and move on, or if you want in the warrant, then you know, I guess then you can also move on, talk about it later in the month and again, because I think the the best way to go at this point, unless you're ready to make a recommendation, is to recommend on town meeting floor.
So I'll take a stab and move that we remove this article from the warrant for the annual town meeting warrant in two thousand twenty-four due to the lack of information.
Second that.
Any further discussion?
The idea being that we would potentially bring it back in the fall special, if there's a special.
I would, I would, I'm I'm not opposed personally to the to the whole concept of it. I just would feel uncomfortable throwing that at the residents, at the voters without any definite information, so I would certainly entertain bringing it back or recommend bringing it back. Gary.
Yeah, it would seem that although it applies to a small group, it'd be hard to answer questions on town meeting floors. We really don't have the information. So maybe we'll just let uh Hamilton take the lead on this and let them play it out and then come back in the fall.
So it's not just Hamilton and Topsfield, there are other communities that also have call firefighters and and reserve police officers, I would think, so.
Yeah, I did. I sent out a um, an email that's suggested by the board a couple of meetings ago to probably a dozen, maybe fourteen, fifteen smallish North Shore communities, most of which surround us and um no, nobody except for Hamilton and Topsfield are are entertaining it at this point.
Yeah. I mean, it makes sense. It's hard to bring it to the floor and and be not be able to give any answers if anyone asks questions, you know. Any further discussion on that? So I will vote to remove, I will vote yes on my motion.
Peters votes yes as well. Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Oh, I did vote, Deirdre, yes.
Deirdre, yes, okay. Maybe I should just call people's names, it would be easier.
Yeah.
Um, so that's five to zero that we voted to take that out. We should probably also make note that Pete Clay joined our meeting. I'm going to say like fifteen minutes ago, seven forty-five? Just so we have that in the minutes. Thank you. All right, so then the ban of single use plastics becomes article nineteen. And I will throw this to you, Deirdre. You did a nice job on that commentary.
Thank you. Um, I it, I think it looks good unless anybody has any comments.
I do. Doesn't sound like that. Would you like to throw the motion out?
Sure, I move that we recommend article nineteen on uh restricting uh on the plastic bag ban.
Five seconds.
Five seconds. Any more discussion? Diane votes yes. Ben?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Five zero unanimous vote to get that to recommend that. Thank you very much. Onto article twenty, the resolution to change the state flag and seal.
I added this little commentary here.
Oh. Can you guys read that? See everybody squinting. Twenty twenty-one. Well, thank you.
Need to capitalize legislature? Next to last line or there, next to last line?
I got this right off of um so you don't think I wrote, I dreamed it up, but I got it right off of the flyer that Sam was circulating with the Human Rights Committee.
I was going to give you all that credit.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't want to take any credit. Unless you really like it, then I'll take it.
I move that the Select Board recommend article twenty to change the state flag and seal at town meeting twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-one.
But it's actually article twenty, I think.
I was renumbered up. Oh, no, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Think that um
five seconds, by the way.
It's been seconded. Any other discussion on the resolution? Diane?
I I I have a comment about the commentary.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a comment. I mean, I I support this, but I don't know that the last few sentences of the commentary are appropriate because it's basically telling people how to vote. It's maybe too much advocacy for a town meeting warrant article in my opinion.
Yeah, I'll just leave it at the it's up to the legislature to take action.
You can say um. You can say um.
I guess, yeah, I mean, that's fair. And your recommendation is then.
Yes. Okay, good call then. Any other discussion? I jumped the gun on that. Diane votes yes. Deirdre?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Look at that. It's already recommended five zero. Amazing. So now we're on Article twenty-one. Which is um, would be titled amend.
Yeah, so this. Uh, just before we get started, um.
I see you.
So. Pat, well, so I mean, Michelle Bailey brought it forward to the board that, you know, she was concerned. Until the board kind of opted to. Take the lead and be like, you know, we don't need a citizen's petition. We'll just add it to the warrant and revote it. Anyways, right? So uh, Pat, who was the also the, so was the, the two motions, the motion and the motion to amend. Were by Michelle was by, I think Pat Woodell motion, First Amendment. And Michelle Bailey amended it and then Pat Woodelli agreed or, or added another twist in uh. So he, he is against reverse, I just feel like, you know, you should know, he, he's against revoting it. He feels like it should go through. The clerk's office um. Right? So I see, I didn't say this, but I see kind of both sides. I think, you know, if it goes through, this might be a little bit cleaner. But then you also are running the risk of something that passed that last town meeting that, you know, maybe won't pass this town meeting. And I, I don't think it's a large risk, but that, that is a liability there. Something that has already passed and then kind of didn't pass because of a scriveness error.
Deirdre, did you have your head up?
Yeah, well, one thing I have to leave is um, I have to pick my daughter up and she's outside alone um.
Oh.
In Hamilton, so I gotta go, but. One comment I made on this was just to make sure if we keep it in here. To make sure the commentary states actually what we're doing, that it was voted last year and this is a procedural. Vote, but you know, there is still a possibility it won't be voted, I guess.
Good point. I think it would be in, that's a. I like the cleaner way to go and, and I would rather have it on the town meeting this year and just get it done nice and neat. Through the Attorney General, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but in the commentary, it should be the explanation that. This was passed last year in a little bit of confusion and just want to make sure that it's set that way. So well stated. We'll take that under, under consideration and wow, and um, I hope your daughter's okay.
Thanks, I have to excuse myself.
Um. So. I guess the first thing we should discuss then is if we want to put this in. So if we want to keep this in the warrant. For twenty twenty-four um. Personally, I would say yes. Ben?
I think we should, and I think it, I think the commentary should. Be as both you and Deirdre were just saying, just with a little bit of background that it's a procedural. Fix from last year.
Thank you. I personally was um, Gary, go ahead.
No, go ahead first.
Well, so I was at the town meeting and also on the board last year and, and I don't know how that vote went very well. So last, at the last meeting. So I, that's why I, this makes perfect sense. It seems very clear, very easy to understand. I don't think anyone's gonna have a problem with that. Gary?
I, I agree with that. I would also put in the commentary uh, as to when this takes effect. Given this route that we're going.
Oh, yeah.
When would it take effect?
Does the Attorney General have to have another swipe at it or is it?
Yeah, well, I would think that a new, you know, kind of a band, I think that what stands now is what the Attorney General. So it's at la- any at-large members have a ten-year term limit and the other. Um, you know, a board and committee members elected to members uh, don't. When it's supposed to be any member has a ten-year. So right now, as it stands, it's just the at-large members have ten-year. And if this would have to go through, right? Just like how the last one did, would have to go through with the submitted. To the Attorney General's office.
I just think that the commentary ought to include the path to finality on this one. So. I agree. Let's put it on and uh, let's get it done.
Okay. So it's already in the warrant, so we don't have to take a vote to take it off the warrant. Is that right?
No, so I think at the, at the end of, at the end of this night. I think the board should. Vote to open the warrant. And then read through motion to set the warrant as follows. Just read through the title of each article. We'll scroll through it. And then vote to close the warrant and then that way there's no.
Okay. So Article twenty-one should have a title and I think it would be amend. Uh, bylaw hyphen. Uh, CPC or Community Preservation Committee.
CPC term limits.
Yeah. And I would make a motion that the select board recommend favorable action on. This by, this article.
Gary seconds.
Oh, sorry. Any further discussion? Diane votes yes. Ben?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
So that's a four zero vote. Thank you very much. Moving on, then it would be Article twenty-two would be the election of officers. And I think they're up to date. So um. I don't think we recommend that. Then the ballot questions and there's only one, right?
Yep. The one other thing that uh, Jeff. Jeff called or um, sent to Jeff Sular and I, and I, I, I thought it was a good idea. Is to include a glossary of terms at the end of the warrant. There's a glossary on the DLS website. That's pretty good. So it just. It's like three pages long, but it defines like what the general fund is, what OPEP trust fund is, what free cash is. What, you know, all kind of like the municipal finance jargon. Override exclusion, like all the terms that are kind of thrown around. That, you know, the general person picking it up probably would have no idea. I know I wouldn't, you know, if I didn't do this for a living.
Right, so and all the, the words that in the glossary were used them the same way as they described, that they defined them? You know, cause every municipality calls things differently.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's all, it's pretty much all finance terms and it's all, you know, finance master and a lot of finance law, you know, yeah.
Awesome. I think that's a great idea. Um, but you still have two ballot questions, right? But we're taking.
Yeah, we're gonna delete, so it's a, yeah.
We're gonna go do that now?
I can delete it now, yeah.
Okay. So I move that we open the warrant for the annual town meeting twenty twenty-four.
Play seconds.
It's seconded twice. That's great. Um, Diane votes yes. Ben?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
The unanimous vote.
Yeah, and while you're open, you gotta recommend this one last, this master plan.
Okay. All right, we missed that one. All right, so it's open, so we'll go through each one. Um. And.
You want me to do it?
Yeah, do you want to just go through the article and then the title?
Yeah. I'll do it.
Do the recommendation at Article one and then you will continue, yeah.
Article one, status of master plan, planning board report. Article two, increased veteran and senior tax work off abatement from fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollar. Article three, annual operating budget appropriation town and schools. Article four, use of free cash and other available funds to fund fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital improvement program. Article five, funding of stabilization fund. Article six, funding of OPEP trust fund. Article seven, prior year bills. Article eight, cemetery and other trust funds. Article nine, cemetery sale of lots transfer. Article ten. Transfer from water operating budget to water capital reserve fund. Article eleven, roadwork chapter ninety funding. Article twelve, water software purchase. Article thirteen, CPA reservations and appropriations. Article fourteen, new bylaw, organization and succession of board, commission, council and committee officers. Article fifteen, to remove from elected board of health to appointed board of health. Article sixteen, to remove from elected board of assessors to appointed board of assessors. Article seventeen, community septic loan program. Article eighteen, amending zoning bylaw, outdoor storage or stockpiling of junk. Article.
Oh, this is removing this.
We'll, we'll take that one after.
Article nineteen, ban single-use plastic bags. Article twenty, resolution, change the state flag and seal. Article twenty-one, amend bylaws, CPC term limits. Article twenty-two, election of officers.
That's it.
Gary seconds?
Um, any discussion? Diane says yes.
Ben, yes.
Sorry, Gary?
Gary, yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Perfect. So I would now uh, make a motion that the select board approve or recommend. The Article one, the status of the master plan, planning board report.
Gary seconds?
Pete?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Forward enough, four zero to recommend that to town meeting. Um. So. Do we take a vote to remove? Is that what we need to do, Gary?
Do we need a vote for the consent agenda?
Might as well take it. Just to be safe. I don't think you have to vote to remove anything just cause you, you kind of went through and listed the final warrant.
Perfect. Gary, you want to make that motion?
Uh, I. So is it, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Is it?
Seven to eleven.
Okay, I move that uh, we establish a consent agenda for Articles seven through eleven inclusive.
Second. Any discussion? Uh, Diane votes yes. Pete?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
That's everyone. Four yeses. Okay. I move to close. Oh, wait a minute. Are we good to close? Ben?
Sorry, I just, the, the article that um, regarding the Board of Health, I think there was just like a capitalization issue um. Now, it's further, it's, I think it's further up. It's the elected to appointed. Yeah, uh, I think elected should be, should be capitalized and that's how we did it for Article sixteen as well.
Yeah. Very good.
You are.
Um, anything else we need to do before we close it? I don't think so. So I move that the one and select board vote to close the April sixth, twenty twenty-four town meeting warrant.
Gary seconds?
Discussion? No. Diane says yes. Ben?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Yep, unanimous vote to close the warrant. And I do believe that brings us to the end of our meeting today. Anything you want to add, Steve?
No, just to apologize for the, you know, little hiccup earlier and thanks for. Bearing with us, so we ironed it out.
Issues happen, not a problem. Anyone have anything else to bring up? If not, I'll just remind you all, if you haven't voted yet, tomorrow is the day to vote. One of them is open from seven AM to eight PM. And an interesting motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn at eight, six fifteen PM.
Second. All in favor? Diane, yes. Ben?
Ben, yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
We are out of here. Thank you guys so much. Have a wonderful tomorrow. See you soon.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.